Okay, so we have excused.
Sorry, yes, um, we have two excuse for tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I thought you already knew that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so council member Miles.
Yeah.
Council member Zayjack.
Here.
Council chairperson Pierre.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, it's actually Tracy Bax's turn for the prayer, but since she's not here, I'll lead it and we will pick it up next week. Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee, thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of the council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may be rebound to thy greater honor and glory, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have, there will be no public hearings this evening, and we have no presentations, so we'll move right into speakers on the agenda items. Now I'll remind everybody that you have three minutes to speak specifically on agenda items. Whether you know it or know to us or not, please identify yourself with your residency and clearly identify the agenda items that you're speaking on. With that, Liz, could you call the first person?
Yes, sir. So the first speaker that I have here is Aaron Union, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, please come to the podium, sir. You are speaking on the agenda items, and which items will you be speaking on?
Anybody, rehabilitation houses, something like that, right under the second.
I'm sorry, under the second what, sir?
House community location projects.
Okay, and that's agenda item number two, right?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead.
So my name is Aaron Union, everyone knows me as Coach Union. I live in California, California, Niagara Falls. So we know what the problems are, so with that agenda, there's two things that I was at the meeting last night, and then talk about jobs and infrastructure. So my recommendation is, as far as solution, well, then how is, you know, someone before close, somebody who owns a city apartment, sell them to the residents of Niagara Falls, and we can fix them up. This is where you can use the youth, you can teach them trade, like electrician or plumber, sell them to the residents of Niagara Falls for a dollar. You can teach people that you don't have to go to college, get a master's degree, make a hundred thousand dollars a year. Or you can, that's community, let me not skip around infrastructure. So you're not invested into what is a pothole pillar, so the city workers are not even paying the street, and pothole doesn't work, so there's no time. Talk about public, Department of Public Works, they're not even taking grass out here, okay? Number O's, houses, cities, banks, whoever owns them, this is a mental health and a physical, public health safety issue, because that's what, there's snakes coming out of this grass, there's possum living there, so kids can't, when you do the streets, there's trees on my block, that's been there, blocking the sidewalk since winter. And I called to whether the Department of Public Works, it says, oh, it's going to take two, three weeks, okay, it's been here since winter, and it came, they attacked one house, an abandoned house, they cut that grass, but those trees on the public sidewalk, kids can't walk down the street. So all this, you know, the losing charge, or, you know, it's just too much lazy shenanigans going on. As far as what, as far as jobs, okay. CDL permits, I got my CDL license within two weeks, you start up at the, in the T A with a hundred grand a year, starting off, and I know the president of the union is Jeff, I talked to him through my life in the union, I told him he had to join the union, I was born in the union. They're trying to eliminate the progression period and start people off at thirty dollars an hour, but guess what, I can help the youth get this CDL license within two weeks, and they will be part of the union, they will get eleven percent pension, but they only have the max six, the union puts up eleven, they will have access to term life insurance with no medical background checks, so there's all kind of opportunities out here if we have access and we can reach out to our kids, but guess what, they uncomfortable, because I talked to someone in the crawl department, Mr. Doris Morrison, and I talked to all his clients, and I told him I'm going to work with him, but guess what, the client, he doesn't know how to read a writing. So he agreed, the client, at first agreed, yeah, I'm going to work with him, but guess what, when it, when it broke into the road, I'm at the library with the phone, my phone, he doesn't show up, I tracked him down from McDonald's, and he's like, you don't want to do it, it's not like you're going back to jail, he's like, I take my chances, because they don't got kids down at school, so it doesn't matter about these jobs, these other people talking about that, they want to create, I don't want to get that, Walmart is using an app to hire illegals. These people at Walmart here just did English, know how to read, but when I talk to them piece by piece, sir, you look at the card, you look at the card, you didn't train them, didn't practice enough. They're not, they're hiring them with an app, I call to Walmart, they don't even answer me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Union. Our next speaker is Tim Huther, agenda items number four and six.
Evening. Tim Huther, six twenty-nine, National Union. Here to speak on the main one that I wanted to talk on was the agenda item number six. We had issues with the water board, I'm sure y'all are aware, the union did, when they eliminated positions and we had to go through the possible litigation and get those positions brought back because they were necessary. On the agenda for item number six, you're looking to abolish the forester's position and combine that with a foreman for parks, buildings. Those are two full-time positions, and I think we can agree that the forestry department's a little behind. We're going to try and take that position and combine it with the fore, or with the foreman for parks, who, we've heard that the parks aren't cut grass, I can assure you we are, but we're going to try and combine two full-time positions for two departments that are, I think we could probably agree are a little behind doing the weather and stuff like that, everything else, but anyway, I think it's a good idea. Forester was actually eliminated a few years back, and it was the forestry department, or the foresters' position, the duties were performed by Paul Dickinson, who was also the greenskeeper for the golf course, horticulturist, and when Mr. Dickinson left, though, we had to bring that position back, Mr. Joe Ursel came back after a month's litigation, costly, it cost taxpayers a lot of money. At the end of the day, we're litigating for labor stuff, we don't use the city attorney, they have contracted attorneys, you know, so that, that all costs taxpayers money, yeah, it costs the unions as well, but there's no reason to have that cost, we need to make smart decisions on that. On item number four, I gotta point out, I see that this is a woman-owned business, I get it, qualifies for a dollar for dollar, match up to a million dollars, to rehabilitate ten city-owned properties, okay, and those ten, you don't get, can't get any money until you take ownership and you start working, they have a plan or get that. But when you go through and you look at the plan from the letter of intent from the developer, you go through and you look at the addresses, and I see addresses, five sixteen Ferry Avenue, the scope is complete rehab and keep as an Airbnb, we're going to pay them half of their cost to clean up because they're matching dollar for dollar, for them to have a business and run an Airbnb. The first four are going to be kept in complete rehab and keep it as an Airbnb, okay, we need to support local business, I get it, woman-owned business, I got it. But then when you look at the other six, the scope says secure, clean out, and sell. So this lady, woman-owned business, is going to get these properties, five thousand dollars apiece, going to get a dollar for dollar, match and bring up to a million dollars, going to keep four for her own business, and turn around, secure them, clean them out, and then sell them for, I'm assuming, a profit. Do we get any more five thousand dollar houses I can take and clean out and sell and make money off? I, I think that's a bad deal for the city guys. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janine Gallow, and when you come to the mic, Janine, let us know which items you're speaking on.
My name is Janine Gallow, still, so are you a good drive extension? And I'm going to speak on agenda four, okay? I, actually, tonight I offer, I'll buy like six blocks in Niagara Falls for five thousand dollars a house. When you waive the taxes and when you forget that she's a woman, that's fine, I understand that, but you're basically giving her ten things, four businesses and then six run, six properties to sell. I'm a woman, I'll take a hundred of them right now, okay? It, it doesn't make sense. R B M Bs is a business, like I said, cleaning up, but you're waiving the taxes or just selling, you're also waiving how many years you cut the grass, right? You paid the company to cut the grass, maintain, just if you did it or you didn't, you still paid somebody that was supposed to do all the work on those properties, but you continue to keep giving houses, I've been here for, I don't know how many years now, seems like twenty, but I remember in the beginning talking about, I think Mr. Miles talked about the houses and why not giving the people a chance to buy these houses, and all the excuses that I've always heard was, well, they did, well, they did, well, they did, but they keep having these houses that to give away, and if you do a little paper trail of LLCs, I don't know Noah's, the guy that's running, but his mom owns LLCs, and it's very convenient that the mayor has given her numerous houses to, to, to make R B M Bs out of and sell. Could be the reason he's on a billboard and the mayor is probably sponsoring him to be a yes man up there, but it's a conflict of interest. He's never, I've never seen him here, I watched him at the thing last night, it was kind of funny, because he really doesn't even know what he's talking about or, or what he's really doing, other than somebody told him you need to get on one of those seats so you could be a yes, like three other people up there. So he's kind of, I mean, and then we have another person, again, with interest in these, these things here, that states she would do anything for the mayor. You people up there in all these agenda items need to be for the people, and I don't think like that gentleman said, is it fair to give one person all these and waive all these things? The last time you gave houses away, we found out the mayor was on the committee that gave the houses to the company that waived the taxes that they didn't know that were, were going to be waived. So this is just, agenda four is a continuation of the scam and the dirtiness of Niagara Falls. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Tanya Barone, agenda items number four and seven.
Good evening. I am here to speak on agenda number four, the ten properties that we are going to be selling for five thousand dollars apiece and having the taxes waived. I have concerns about that only because the values of the properties, has there been any valuations or appraisals done on those properties? How much are they really worth? How did we come to that figure? It's also less money that the Niagara Falls School District and the city will get if we waive the taxes, and as Janine had mentioned, another concern was all of the maintenance that we've done on those properties for X amount of years, how do we recoup that money? I know that they're not currently getting any tax revenue, but as stated, this is for someone's personal business, and I don't have anything against people that are in business, small businesses, I do support that, and I do support growth and rejuvenation of our city, but I think it has to be done the correct way. And I did have a chance to speak to Renee as I was signing up and did ask her how she found out about the properties, if there was a list somewhere, I tried to do a search online on the city's website, and I didn't find anything, but she said it was a personal conversation that had taken place, and she could probably tell you a little bit more when she comes up. I'm wondering why some of the city properties have not gone on auction, so that it gives everybody an opportunity to bid and maybe bid up more than five thousand and maybe get the taxes paid, I think that would be beneficial. Do we know the amount of the taxes that we're waiving on each of the properties and what that total amount is? I think it's only fair to have that kind of information. As far as number seven, the approve, approval of the waiver of the attorney-client privilege so that there could be an argument taking place here between a council member and the city attorney who has to prove himself right regarding an email, I think is ridiculous, I think we shouldn't even have it on the agenda. We should really try to set an example for the constituents here in the city, especially because it is part of the rules for public speaking that we're not supposed to be engaging in any personal attacks. I think we need to set an example. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Renee Moran, agenda item number four.
Thank you. My name is Renee Moran, and I wanted to address the council tonight. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and my credentials here in the city of Niagara Falls. I am a resident of the city of Niagara Falls, I'm an investor in the city of Niagara Falls, and I'm a business owner in the city of Niagara Falls. I am not in cahoots with the mayor, I've never been to his home, and I'm not his friend. Others have asked me how did this come into play, and I'm happy to be very transparent about that. I am a realtor, I'm a broker, I own a real estate brokerage, Red Door Real Estate. Just some quick background, we purchased a building on the MLS, the open real estate market, nobody gave it to us at a discount, and we renovated that twenty-five, that building had been vacant for twenty-five years and boarded. We put our heart, love, and soul into my office, I invite anybody here to stop by and see what we've been doing here in the city of Niagara Falls. We do quarterly homeownership seminars, we do weekly investor webinars to promote responsible investing, we have turned countless renters into owners. I stand behind what I say, I have a proven track record of success in development, I started out flipping homes on the east side of Buffalo fifteen to twenty years ago when nobody else was, we took dilapidated homes and put them in the hands of homeowners. This project came into my lap when I took an investor in to meet with Kevin Forma, he's the city planner, when I find a good investor that I think has the money and the vision and heart to invest in this city, I take him right into the city to see how we can help them and put them on a path of success. And through those meetings, I asked Kevin Forma, what happened to the Rod Davis plan? And he said, well, it's still here, we just need somebody to finish it. And I went home and I talked to my hubby, who's a contractor, and I said, do you think we could pull this off? And we thought about it, and we had a meeting with Kevin Forma, and we brought to him a proposal. And instead of overpromising that we can take ten properties and renovate them in two years, that's, that's a huge project, we're realistic with the expectations. We want to stabilize here and manage six of them and list them in the open real estate market so that other developers, city residents have a chance to purchase them. And then the other four, we plan on keeping two for ourselves for an Airbnb, that would be my retirement plan, and sell two on the open market to homeowners. So I'm happy to answer any questions to you, anybody in this room, and anybody in the city of Niagara Falls. I want to be nothing but transparent, we are ready, willing, capable, and able, and have the experience to do this project. Thank you for your time.
That is our last speaker.
Okay. Moving on to administrative updates, Mr. DeBois, do we have any administrative updates this evening?
Briefly, at the last meeting, there was a, a claim that a, there was a violation of the Roberts Rules, Rule twenty-three, pertaining to a point of order. I did not recollect a, a Rule twenty-three objection being raised, I did review the video and audio tape for the last meeting. What the councilman was referring to was a point of information, he made a point of information several times. Point of information is not a point of order, there's a difference between the two. A point of order can be made just about at any time, there are some limited exceptions, but as a general rule, point of order can be made just about at any time. Point of information cannot. Point of information is to ask a question about an item of business, and so during our, our council meetings, that refers to the things that are being voted on, those are the items of business, so agenda items one through whatever, if those come up, if anyone has, anyone on the council has a question, they can say either I have a request for information or a point of information, but those, that's the only time that that, that type of request is in order. So just want to assure everybody that we do strive to comply with Roberts Rules, there was no violation of Rule twenty-three last, at the last meeting. I will mention that we've been working with Roberts Rules for a little over a year, and I did, I did supply all the council members with a summary of the Roberts Rules in January of twenty twenty-four, so hopefully you still have your copies and you can refer to it. You can certainly do the research to explore what the difference is between a point of order and a point of information, it's covered in this yellow volume. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I actually have a point of order, he said we can do a point of order at any time, right?
So.
What is your? It said it.
So you can, but then you have to state your, the point of, of the Roberts Rule violation or some other special rule of the council, so go ahead.
So this is the rule that I'm actually going to state, and I want to make sure that I read it, so I want to put this correctly, so it's on record. Mr. Chair.
Are you reading from, are you reading from Roberts Rules at this point?
Well, he's, he's giving me the objection.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. I was made aware, and come to my attention, of course, that a resolution has been placed on the agenda that was not sponsored by any member of this council. Under the standard rules of municipal procedure and Roberts Rules of Order, only duly elected council members, and in some cases the mayor, has the authority to introduce legislation or place an item on the agenda. The corporation council serves as an advisory, in an advisory capacity and does not have legal authority to introduce resolutions independently. For the record, I request clarification as which council members sponsored this item, and if no such sponsorship existed, I move that the item be removed from the agenda immediately, its inclusion violates the proper legislative procedure and undermines the integrity of this council. That means he is not an elected official, and, hold on, I'm, I'm just finishing up my, 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 my.
When you made your point, can I make a suggestion?
I, I, I really didn't finish, you can't tell me that I finished something, I, I'll yield my time, I'll yield that in a second.
I would like to make a suggestion.
Where you not finished?
May I make a suggestion to you? I'm asking you.
I think, I think you will be able to, I think you will be able to make a better suggestion when you hear my whole, when, when you hear everything that I have to say, and it would, it would make more sense. The thing is, is that we here, and again, it's been stated that this council has become a circus and all of the gaslighting has been ridiculous. The problem is, is this, we're operating out of order, and for the simple fact that someone who was not elected by the people actually put an item on the agenda independently, without any sponsorship, as you say that I should get from my colleagues, who are actually hired by the people, elected by the people, that's a, that's a Roberts Rule that you know personally that you're, that you're break.
I haven't heard about the Roberts Rule, are you going to cite the Roberts Rule?
Are you, are you, is that, am I, am I false? Is, is that a false statement that I made by saying?
I'm, I'm trying to help the council, the council member has to rule on your point of order, and you haven't given, you have, hang on, hang on.
You can make a suggestion.
What you haven't done is told him what rule of order you contend has been violated, so if you have, you cited, you cited Roberts Rule twenty-three at the last meeting.
Are you able?
Do you have a Roberts Rule to cite or some other rule?
Question, are you able to introduce legislation or put an agenda on our, on our, our agenda as a city council agenda because you're not a city council member? You're just supposed to answer questions that deal with the law.
Councilman, you're dodging my question, I'll answer, I'll answer.
You don't, you don't have a question.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
All right, so.
Okay, so give me, I, I.
All right, now, are you listening to me? Are you listening to me?
No, give me your.
Will we get to the point for the agenda, why don't you make a motion to strike the item from the agenda instead of going through all of that?
Well, I mean, that's because he's, he's, he brought it up first, so I figured right after, I want to keep along, I want to go along with this.
Not even talking about.
I spoke about, I spoke, spoke about the point of order objection that you made at the last meeting.
All right, so he said that we can make a point of order at any point of the meeting, right?
But you haven't cited the rule, sir.
Okay.
So, and to answer, I, I said I would answer Mr. Miles' question, I'm going to. He's been on this council for three and a half years at least, right? He's certainly, he has certainly seen and, and read my memos to the council for action on, on, on items, for things to the council to vote on, okay? So many times I have brought the same type of memo, asking the council to approve settlements. There's an example where I have exercised that ability. So historically, my predecessors used the same memos to introduce. So historically, my predecessors used the same memos to introduce things to vote on. There is a section of the agenda by corporation council. If, if the councilman paid attention to the agendas, he would see, see quite often that those agendas are broken up into sections. The first section is usually from the mayor. When, when the, when the acting corporation council or past corporation councils had items, the agenda always said from corporation council. So there is plenty of precedent for it. And I'm waiting, I'm, I'm waiting patiently for Mr. Miles to identify what rule of order he alleges was, was broken.
Two, hold on, two, because there's, there's a discrepancy in that item number seven that he put anyway, because you brought up July nineteenth. I was not talking about July nineteenth. Anybody who was here during the fall, hold on, wait, wait, during the fall season, it was due, it was.
The item says nothing about July nineteenth. The item itself says nothing about July nineteenth.
In our supporting documentation, you wanted to actually waive your confidentiality from July nineteenth, from the email from July nineteenth. Go ahead, you can look at it. So watch this, so here's the thing, so at the end of the day, watch this. Here's the, here's the, here's the, hold on, sir, hold on. Here's the, here's the difference.
The email was dated July nineteenth, it wasn't about July nineteenth.
Right, right, the email, that's what you're talking about, the actual email. So here's where he's messed up. When I actually spoke about what he was talking about, this is why he brought this whole item up, was in fall when I actually tried to get the Beach Avenue project on to, I didn't even start talking about Beach Avenue until September. So July had absolutely nothing, could you not cut me off? I'm not done. July had absolute, the July email had absolutely nothing to do with that because I, that July email had to do with me asking for a public hearing due to the fact that the Day of Prayer was interrupted and that the Juneteenth Festival was interrupted. That was the July nineteenth, that's what you brought up for here. What I was talking about was when I had spoke about the, the Beach Avenue project and you said that, oh, you, I got it late because I was flying. Those who were here, they remember that. Right, so I'm not done. So don't try to make it seem like I'm making something up. At the end of the day, you're out of line, you've been overreaching since you've been here. And so what I'm saying is, is this, that whole, this whole agenda number seven, being that he, he's talking about the wrong email first and being the fact that he actually tries to introduce legislation and put an agenda item on our city council without, and you didn't sponsor it. You didn't sponsor it. I didn't sponsor it. The two active teams didn't sponsor it.
I think you heard, you heard me say that I submitted it.
That's, so that's my reasoning, because he's talking about the wrong email to begin with. So he's, that's, that's the first part. The second part, the mayor. And the second part is, is that he, he, he's doing it outside of the scope of his job. He's overreaching.
So, so the.
So, yeah, no, no, I get it, I get it. But the only reason why, because he won't stop. So he's talking, I have to respond to him.
The original update was due to a question that I asked Mr. DeBois after the last meeting about the procedure. He was giving me an update on what the procedure was. That had nothing to do with item number seven or any of that. He was just giving this update on procedures where you had said point of order and we didn't. And he's correcting me saying we have a point of order.
But it's personal. It's personal.
You made it personal.
No, he, he makes it personal.
Okay, whatever.
So I will, I will contend that, I will contend that the, the dating, first of all, when Mr. Miles spoke, he did not cite any particular date. He said in twenty twenty-four. What I did is I went back and found the earliest example where I gave Mr. Miles very explicit information on how, how to get a resolution processed. And that was, that was the July nineteenth email. So it is relevant. He just said that what he was talking about was something he brought up later in the year in the fall of twenty twenty-four. That makes my, my email even more relevant because it shows that he received explicit instructions on how to do that in July.
No, no, you can't, see, here's the, hold on, wait, let's break it down because here's the thing. You can't just like let things slide. Because when you let them slide, at the end of the day, it becomes culture. So here's the thing about, here's, here's the thing about it. So what you're saying is, is that when I gave you that email early that Wednesday, and this is about the Beach Avenue project, when I gave you that email earlier that Wednesday about the Beach Avenue project and you said you didn't get it because it, it was late and you were flying, if you could just like listen, be an active listener.
I'm actively listening.
You're not, you're not active listener.
Oh, I am, I'm listening to every word you're saying.
Yeah, because you, you're just waiting to give a rebuttal. I'm just trying to give you.
You do the same thing to Mr. Perry. So why would you expect it to be different from me?
What are you going to say?
If there's, if there's an email, if there is an email that you wish a privileged. If, if there is a privileged email that you think supports your position, then you should do the same thing I did, make a motion to have the privilege relieved. And then we can get them all out on the table and see clarity and transparency and accountability.
Just because, hold on, this is the last thing I'm going to say before, I'm, I'm, I'm going to make that motion though. I'm, I'm actually do what you suggested me to do when it's time for it. But just so you know, just because you slap a confidentiality notice on the bottom of an email doesn't make it legit in court. You do understand that, right?
Then take me to court, then take me to court to litigate it. We'll let a judge decide it, not you.
Here's the thing, here's what I'm telling you, because.
We'll let a judge decide it and not you.
Again, because you slapped, you put a confidentiality notice on our agenda items. That's something that's public notice, that's going to be published on the city website.
Can we just adjutant executive session and get out of the business of the people?
There are no details in that item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we move on?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any community happenings?
Any community happenings? Okay, we're at section four now for the agenda. Section four, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed or to make an amendment to the agenda?
Motion adopted.
Okay, motion to adopt the agenda?
That was Councilmember Zijak. He motioned to adopt us presented. Just wait another second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any opposition? Liz?
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three A's.
Okay, motions adopted, the A's have it. Okay, now we're at the section five with the. The minutes for distributed for April twenty-third and May seventh, the minutes. Do we have any corrections or changes that we want to make to those minutes? Okay, no changes, then we will adopt the minutes as approved and distributed. Section six, I believe that City Clerk has no updates for us, nothing?
No, sir, no updates at this time.
All right, we're now at the legislative items of the agenda. And we will move on to legislative item number one from the mayor. I'll jump and make the first motion to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the sole source provider, Shannon Christian Inc. Enterprises Inc. for the purchase of basic equipment, a two hundred and forty volt, two-four ton split drum roller with tow package that is needed for the Department of Public Works as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated June twelfth. But I have a second on that motion.
Second.
Any information requests? Any opposition?
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three A's.
Three A's, motion accepted. Legislative item number two.
Mr. Chairperson, I move that the council will to approve the reprogramming of fifty thousand dollars of CDVG funds returned by CC and DC to Community Development for its housing rehabilitation projects and authorize the mayor to execute any documents necessary to accomplish the same as more, as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I have a second?
Second.
Opposition? Information, go.
As far as, is this, this is just basically reprogramming. So this is something that came back. This is funding that was already available. This is not something new. This is something that was available, they didn't use it and they're asking it to be reprogrammed back to this space. And that's, that's a question.
That's correct.
Any other information requests? Okay, any opposition? Liz, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three A's.
Three A's, motion Perry. Action item number three. The motion is approve the grant of an additional ninety thousand dollars by Community Development to Niagara Area Habitat for Humanity, Inc. as well as authorize the execution of any documents necessary to effectuate the same as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation dated June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. May I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Information requests?
Yes, what are the details regarding the increase from ten thousand to twenty thousand per unit?
It's basically the cost of materials. Everything has gone up, everything is more expensive. Now, that's not to say that twenty thousand will be used on every unit. It's up to, so our team at Community Development is going to be supervising the work. And for example, one unit might require fifty-five hundred dollars. The next one might require ninety-five hundred dollars. So it's going, it's going to be variable based on the conditions at hand. But our own, our own community development rehab people who work with lead, lead abatement have recognized the cost increases. So they tell me they're not surprised that community, that the Habitat for Humanity is also facing the same inflationary pressure.
Now, I understand out of the CDVG funds that we were in some funding constraints. And I have, you know, I have a high level of respect for Habitat for Humanity. However, I need, could you help me understand that maybe this is probably more so?
Of the opposition. I'll wait until the opposition.
Okay. Okay, any other information requests? Okay, opposition?
Okay, so therefore, that's what I'm continuing. The budget was cut for summer programming for marginalized kids in the city of Niagara Falls. That was in Packer Court and in the Doris Jones Community Center, or Resource Center for summer programming. I'm just having a tough time wondering how is it that we can automatically come up with an additional availability, magically come up with forty thousand dollars now to give to, and it's saying in this item that it's not, it's available in the Community Development Block Grant Fund, but we're cutting programs for our babies in the summer program. I'm trying to have, I, I have a tough time understanding how that, how that works. Because, you know, if, if it's not available and you cut this funding, then that means we didn't have it. So we don't, we, it wouldn't be forty thousand dollars available for anybody. But the fact that our babies are getting their summer programs cut and parents have to come out of their pockets, if someone has four kids, that's a hundred dollars every week. Some people are already strapped for cash, people are living, like have, you know, fixed incomes and whatnot. And now they're stuck with an idea of having to pay for something that should be readily available. And now you're saying that this money is available for this, but they cut it for that. I kind of have an issue and we're voting on that tonight. So, so I, I, I shouldn't be looking at you. That's something that I feel, yeah, so that's something I feel like if we're going to do things on behalf of our constituents, yeah, lead abatement for properties is a, a thing. And yes, I still have a tough time understanding how it, devil. I understand inflation, I understand, you know, tariffs and all that other good stuff and whatever. However, you know, how is it that we magically have forty thousand dollars in this item? And from the same funding sources, let me put it that way. It's not just coming from the city of Niagara, it's coming from the same CDVG funding that we actually cut from the babies.
You'd be excited if you just put fifty grand back into it.
No, that was, that was something that was already there, that was already approved back in twenty twenty-three.
But it just got put back in.
And they. But it was, it basically.
I'm sorry, say it again. Council, excuse me, council chairperson, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I, 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 I thought that was five minutes rule.
I, no, sir, I did not set the timer when the council member was speaking. But.
I think we got your objection anyways, noted. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sure that I set the timer for each speaker.
All right.
Okay.
So I understood. Okay, with that, Liz, call the roll.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Two A's, one N.
The motion's defeated. Okay, moving on to our next item. Item number four, approve the waiver and forgiveness of unpaid property taxes on ten city-owned properties before the same are sold to restore Niagara Falls LLC and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds or other documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of said properties to the developer as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. May I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Information requests?
What's the total amount of taxes that are being waived on all of these properties?
For all ten properties, the total taxes and fees is a hundred seven thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars. Just to point out that those were accrued over many years. The, all those properties were foreclosed upon, so we haven't had that many foreclosures there. They've been, they, they were behind on their taxes many years ago. Those taxes never got wiped. And while they remained on the city property, city property, those taxes continue to accrue. Incidentally, someone mentioned a concern about if we waive these, these taxes, the school district will be hurt. That doesn't, that's not actually how it works. In New York, every municipality, the city included, is required to pick up the tax bill when a house has been foreclosed upon and hasn't paid their taxes. There's a lag time, but generally, we're paying for school taxes that were unpaid every two years. So two years ago. So two years ago, there were unpaid school taxes. The city ends up paying for those. In the coming year, we'll be paying for the school taxes that were unpaid one year ago. In three years, we'll be paying for the school taxes that were unpaid this year. So the school is made whole either way. They have not suffered a, a loss of, of school taxes as a result of these, these taxes not being paid in 10, 15, 20 years.
Oh, you got another? You got a question? Sorry? I got, I got, I got more questions. Um, is there a clawback clause in the event that they're not able to fulfill? Um, if that, if, just in the event that they may not be able to fulfill the, you know, the duties to get this done or whatever, anything could happen at any time. Um, is there any type of clawback clause that would allow the city to retain the housing that was sold to them?
No deed has been drafted yet, so certainly that could be done. But more motivation here than a clawback is you'll have a developer who is, who is putting in investment, right? And the trick is, and Renee didn't mention this, but it's a steep hill to climb. It's not as simple as starting the work and getting money. Under this grant, no matter whether it was Renee that gets it or any other developer, they have to complete all 10 properties. They have to complete rehab on all 10 properties in order to even make the request to the state for the dollar-to-dollar reimbursement. So that means that you're out a million dollars out of pocket. You complete the project and then, then you can start asking the state for reimbursement. On top of that, once the state says you completed everything, we have all your receipts and maybe it's, you know, 850,000, maybe it's a million dollars, whatever you spent, we're going to reimburse you now, there's a six to 12 month delay on top of the completion date for someone to get their money back. So they're, they're very much invested in completing this project because they don't get to get the reimbursement until the very end. That's a strong motivator.
Well, actually, I, I, I've spoken with Renee and I know the work that they do. I mean, I've actually done my due diligence and I've done my homework. They do good work. They rehab homes. They do turn, I've seen it from a personal space, turn renters into homeowners. And they have, you know, so, so it's not, you don't have to necessarily, I'm asking this question because I'm a city councilman. And so because that's my job, I have to make sure that we have things in place that would actually protect the city, of course. So, so it's not about me saying that they won't get it done. I think that they have the potential to get those things done. But I, I asked that to see if they did, and that, that would go for anyone. Any Joe Schmo, if you're going to get this contract, would, is there a clause that could actually allow us to get these properties back if you can't fulfill the, the commitment that you signed up for? So, um, I guess now, um, why, and so I guess this is a question, why hasn't it been since Rod Davis? And that was almost a horrible deal that we almost got into. Um, since then, why hasn't it been advertised to the public as to like the fact that this Rod Davis deal that we had was just sitting on the table and no one had any idea? And if she didn't ask, we wouldn't be sitting here today. What is it that, why isn't it being promoted enough so other people throughout the city, maybe another organization or another entity could actually take part in this as well? Or possibly even create an RFP that, you know, Ms. Renee and other people could actually partake in, and maybe it could be a bid for, and, and it possibly could have been more than $5,000 per house. I just wondering.
So after the Rod Davis deal fell through, there were developers who started reaching out with, with interest. And there was one who was persistent in their interest, but that even fell through. Let me, let me also explain the hurdles with this grant. I mean, it's, it's wonderful that the state is investing a million dollars to rehab homes and, which essentially prevents them from being demolished, right? And if, if any of these are demolished, then it'd be a loss of housing stock. And point of, this is a point of fact, four of those 10 properties that are being proposed for sale to Renee's LLC have been on the city's demolition list for years. So if we, if we didn't sell the properties, they would be demolished by the city. The city's been holding off in the hopes of finding someone who's willing to invest the time, money, and elbow grease to, to save those structures. So we are trying to preserve the structures. But I want to make this point that there were, there were numerous developers who took a look at the properties and toured them. And they lost interest when they, when they heard some of the restrictions. One of the biggest things that turned off developers was when we told them that they have to take all 10, that there's no cherry picking the best properties out of the 10 or just buying several. You have, the, the rule was to get this million dollars from the state, it has to be all 10 properties. And it could only be one developer. There's no splitting the properties between multiple developers. So once people heard, developers heard that they couldn't cherry pick the best properties, many ran away. The second thing that deterred is the fact that they, they have to, they have to wait until the end of the project to get reimbursed, so they're out of for a long time. Developers, most developers don't like that. So while these 10 people's got a lot to look, what we honestly have here is a situation which we've seen before with bids where a bid package goes out for the construction of a city building or the repair of a city building. A number of contractors pick up the bid packages and then only one gets returned, right? We've all seen that happen when it's, there's a sole bidder. Essentially, that is the situation here. The, the, the developers who looked at it were not interested and Renee's LLC is the last standing. The, the grant doesn't last forever. It's been several years now since Rod Davis, right? We don't want to lose that grant money. And the, the only, and that makes her the best, person who, who wants to do this project and said they will, even after there was a structure fire on one of the properties, she's still willing to rehab it rather than demolish it, and that's what we want to hear. That's the reason that she's on the agenda tonight.
And? Any other information requests?
There's one more.
David, do you have something to add? I know you did some extensive research.
Yeah, no, I mean, Mr. DeBois kind of answered those and then Ms. Moran also answered some as well. I'll save the second part for the opposition part. Go ahead if you got a question.
Well, you know, I don't think, I don't think it's really, really an opposition.
Well, this is still information, which is the other way around.
Oh, just for transparency sake for her. So is that, so I want to make sure that the wording is correct. So if she can't do the full rehab to all 10, are they not going to reimburse her? Because she's going to do four, that she's going to be able to totally rehab, keep two for the Airbnb and two for, you know, their own personal rental or whatever the case is. But six she's going to clean out, that's showing that, right?
Rehab is market ready, which means clean them out, boom, do whatever else. You know, I mean, every, every one of those houses needs some form of maintenance. You know, is that rehab? Yes, it is. But whatever it takes to get them up to market. But some of these are deep, deep rehabs.
Okay, so I mean, that's, that's all I was asking to see if, because I don't want a slick, slick wording where it's like then they'll say, okay, well, if she didn't, you know, get it up to this space or whatever the case is, that, you know, she's, she's not going to get paid or anything like that.
No, no, she wouldn't be penalized. All she has to do is, I make it sound easy. All she has to do is get those structures into a habitable condition and market ready. And, and if that happens, the state will be happy, the city will be happy. And, and those properties will be back on the tax roll.
Yeah, so my opposition isn't so much for Ms. Moran and her company. It's more so with the ESD side of things. I feel like if it wasn't, and I could, my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like if it wasn't for Ms. Moran coming up here today and telling us how she heard about the properties, which thank you very much for the information, I think it's kind of like cloak and dagger on ESD's end. Like we said, the Rod Davis deal kind of fell through. We were in the dark of what was going on. So again, opposition isn't for this agenda item. I guess it's just how ESD kind of let it go to the wayside. And then thank you to Ms. Moran and Ms. Moran for showing interest in coming back to Mr. Forma and being willing to take this on. So yeah, that was just my opposition with how that was handled from the ESD side.
And kind of pretty much piggyback off of that same statement is that, again, that the optics are horrible. Because what, what it looks like is that, you know, we did, we set this up with Rod Davis. We didn't have, there was a horrible vetting process and we found out that he was pretty much a slump lord in that process. And then, so the vetting wasn't done that well and it was brought to us. And then all of a sudden, there's this quietness. And then all of a sudden, bam, we're here. And there's a, there's an agenda item. So it looks as if something behind the scenes is done and that she had not come and actually explain how it happened and what happened and dropped the names that she actually spoke to. It would look from the community that it was a backdoor deal. You know what I mean? That's, that happens. This, the, the actual optics would look really bad. So I agree that, you know, how it was done and the lack of transparency and the lack of advertisement on that, that end, and even on the administration's end, because these are still properties that are still available. And when I ask multiple times for a list of city properties from our city and from our city assessor, I get this little baby book of nothing and a bunch of like lots and things like that, but we have properties that we're actually selling still, you know what I mean? So this is, that's the frustration of it. So, but I get it. That, that's my thing too as well.
Opposition?
That was it.
That was the question.
That was it. Yep.
All right. Liz, go ahead.
Councilmember Miles?
With, again, like I said, with what I know and what I know of the actual company and, you know, with her actually coming in explaining, um, I just wish that we would move better when it comes down to these different projects and whatnot. I wish we were a little bit more open. I wish we were a little bit more transparent and allow more community engagement when it comes down to buying homes. But again, I, I've seen results from them as well. So at the end of the day, I vote yes on this.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yeah. Again, Ms. Moran, thank you for coming and sharing that information with us and kind of helping us fill in the gaps there. Wish you the best of luck. Yes.
And council person, uh, council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three A's.
Three A's, the motion's carried. Looking on to action item number five. Action number five, approve the waiver and forgiveness of unpaid proper, city property taxes on city-owned vacant residential parcel at 19582nd Street before the same is sold to Christian Baylor, Christina Baylor, and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds or other documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of said property to the purchaser. All as more outline, more readily outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated June 12th, 2025. The motion's on the floor. May I have a second?
Second.
Information requests?
So this is just a lot, right?
It's a vacant lot. It's, it's a parcel that missed the vacant lot program that we finished up this spring. But it's essentially, it's, it's a vacant lot and the, the proposed purchaser lives right next door, so she meets the criteria.
Any other information requests? Any opposition? Liz, please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three A's.
Three A's, the motion's carried. May I have a motion for item number six?
Mr. Chairperson, I move that the council vote to approve the organization in the Department of Public, Department of Parks and Public Works relative to three specific positions, all as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated June 12th, 2025.
Okay, this, um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, I make, I'd like to make a motion to, I understand that there are some FERC charges relative to this, this move. And I think that it would be prudent for the city council to table this to the next meet, or postpone this to the next meeting until such time the administration could work through these issues with the possibility of FERC charges coming. So I'd like to make the motion to postpone the vote of this.
Second.
Motion to postpone that table.
Motion to postpone.
Got it. Thank you.
And Dante Miles seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. Liz, call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Miles?
I'm post, my postpone is for a different reason because we have a lot of trees that are still on year-long lists to be cut down, ash trees that people have been waiting for years to be cut down and to remove the forestry. Job for, uh, for this position, it doesn't make any sense to me. So yes, postpone.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes, the postpone.
Three A's.
Three A's, the motion, action item number six, the postpone.
Okay, um, from corporate council, item number seven, to approve a waiver of attorney-client privileges that belongs to the council as a body relative to a specific email preparation prepared by the acting corporate council, all more fully outlined in his recommendation memo dated June 12th, 2025. Is there a second? Motion's defeated. Action item number eight, relative, resolution from the, resolution relative to amending section 738.06 of the codified ordinance of the city of Niagara Falls, New York entitled Clean Neighborhood Ordinance to change the procedure for annual reports to be made to the city council. May I have a second?
Second.
Information requests? Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zijak?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Three A's.
Three A's, the motion's carried. With that, we've completed the legislative items for the day. Next up, we're going to do it with public speakers for the good of the community. And I assume we have a list?
Yes, sir.
Ready?
We set the timer for three minutes?
Yes, sir. Okay, so our first speaker is Aaron. Aaron, are you still here? Okay, all right. So our next speaker is Tim Huther. Can you come to the podium? Please announce your topic.
I just want to go up and say thank you to everybody, corporation, councilwoman, Ms. Moran, everybody that clarified about the properties. That was one of the things I had huge questions on. That was one of the things I had huge questions on, and, um, the one of the things, I want to apologize for my outburst while you guys were having a conversation, but I was looking through agenda items number two and number three.
What's your topic, Tim?
Um, for the good of the community. I wanted to say thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, it, it was a question as to where the money came from, where we're taking money from, and I, I read through, and I was looking and seeing that item number three was funded by item number two. That was my outburst, what I was trying to say. I wasn't trying to be rude or jerk to interrupt your, your meeting or anything, but item number two funded item number three in the agenda items, so, um, I want to say thank you though for the information. Appreciate it. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. And our next speaker, and before we actually have our next speaker, and I just wanted to tell you, Tim, thank you so much. The reason why I do ask people to announce what they're speaking about, there are examples on our sign-in sheet, when you're speaking under for the good of the community, we just request that you list examples so that I can make it clear for public record. So that's the only reason why that I asked you. Yes. No, 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 I appreciate you bringing clarity to it. So our next speaker is going to be Priscilla Adams. Is that correct? Priscilla? Are you still here? No? Okay, thank you. Was she, okay. I just, I didn't want to skip anybody. Our next speaker is Tanya Barone. When you come to the podium, Tanya, if you could list your topic, please. State your topic. Thank you.
Just here to speak in general on the good of the community. I know that blight is a very big topic in our city. The garbage, the building conditions, the grass, that, you know, city-owned properties, it's very, very high, not well-kept. I can't help but notice every time I come into this building, the landscaping. And I'm praying, as an example, we can set for everybody in the city that our own city hall building would look much better than it does. There's trees growing out of the bushes. I don't know the last time they've been cut, or there, when there's been fresh mulch put out there. But if you look across the street at M&amp;T, everything is nicely shaped, there's fresh mulch, right across the street, next to a vacant building, obviously, but, um, there's also a dead tree out front. That's just, it's an eyesore. So I think we really need to start setting some examples by our own city hall building. It would make everybody happy, because I think it's a topic when we're all standing outside after the meeting, and we're looking at the dead tree and the bushes growing trees. So I think that will, that would be a good start, is just taking care of what we own first, and then maybe it'll give the residents, when they have to come here and pay bills, a good feeling. That's all I have to say, is hopefully we can get the landscaping taken care of and the dead tree. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Renee Moran. You're going to pass? Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Janine Gallo. Janine Gallo, speaking about, uh, the good of the people. Okay. You forgot about the stairs. Again, the City of Niagara Falls sometimes rips the City of Buffalo to pieces, but you go in city hall there, it's old as, my God, and it's gorgeous. Go on the outside, it's beautiful, well-maintained. It does set an example of what the city's about. You go downtown, you see growth. Now, when I spoke about the ten properties from the lady, I didn't know who the LLC was or anything, because you get the agenda ten minutes before you come here, so it's hard. I'm very happy that she's from Niagara Falls. Obviously, a man who ever had it before, I don't know the story of why it folded, but at least she's from here. What she doesn't realize is all the other things that come through, flying through here from companies that do nothing but fill their pockets and leave. So it's not her personally, and as a businessperson, for $50,000, if you gave me ten houses, I wouldn't care if somebody matched what I had anyways, because I wouldn't need it. I'll just have to do, sell one of those houses, and I have my money back. So she's a smart businesswoman, she shouldn't be penalized for that. And many, 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 many years ago, and you can, I'm not going to go into details, I bought thirteen houses in Niagara Falls. That's probably why I don't have mortgages today, because it's a very easy place to buy foreclosed houses, fix, I, I bought thirteen, I fixed two of them, made a lot of money. I sold the other eleven to some man in, from Miami. He did whatever he did, I found out afterwards, he scammed the city, you know, not so much the city, he took, um, second loans out at the assessed value of the houses, took the money and went back to Florida and left the eleven houses to die in Niagara Falls. But that was done all over, not just Niagara Falls. But there's our ways to loop, but here you have a resident from Niagara Falls, going to make, try to make Niagara Falls better. That's awesome. But to watch up here, the council, not back up the council, their own council people, asking for five minutes, like, demanding because one of his peers is speaking, to make him shut up, you have, you know, you get scolded every time you speak, but Potato Head and Pinocchio, or anybody else that speaks, doesn't get scolded, but, you know, there's been so many racial, racial things talked, said to you, and I apologize, Mr. Dante Miles, because it's embarrassing to watch this racketeer attack you. Thank you. And that, sir, was our last speaker for the evening. I hope everyone has a peaceful night.